All right. Thank you. The regular meeting of the South Colony Board of Education is now called to order. Roll call. Thomas Blakely.
Here.
Brian D.C.
Here.
Stephanie Cogan, here. Vincent Torrenzo.
Here.
Rose Gigliello.
Here.
Jennifer Houlihan.
Here.
Mike Keane.
Here.
David Keel.
Here.
Christopher Larrabee.
Here.
And Robert Measick.
Here.
May we all stand before the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for attending tonight. Agenda item number three. Approval of the minutes. Hyperlinked is the regular meeting of the October 7th, 2025 minute meetings. Meeting minutes, sorry. Any questions, comments, edits? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to approve. Mr. Blakely. Second, Mr. Measick. On the motion made by Mr. Blakely, seconded by Mr. Measick, that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 7th, 2025 be approved. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. Agenda item number four. Superintendent update, Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Cogan. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Earlier tonight, we had, in our board office meeting, I talked a little bit about the district operational plan. It's a plan that encompasses our mission and vision for the district, as well as some of our strategic planning and our management plans, which gives an outline of what each of our administrative departments does as an overview. That plan will be available on our website by the end of this week, so I just wanted to make people aware of that. If you're looking for some deep reading about the district, it is available. We'll be checking for anybody that reads it. The bus rodeo Saturday, we had a great event. I wanted to thank Brian Sim and our Transportation Department for putting on a bus rodeo. It was a recruitment fair, as well as a highlight of what our Transportation Department does each and every day. So, thank you to all of our board members and community members who came out to test drive the buses. And just goes to show what wonderful professionals we have in our Transportation Department, both as our school bus drivers, our school monitors, our mechanics who were driving regularly, and our assistant transportation directors. Really top-notch. They made it as easy as possible to learn to drive a bus in five minutes. Kudos to them. And I encourage anybody that is interested to please contact our Transportation Department or Human Resources if you are interested in driving a bus and learning to become a bus driver in our district. It's truly a great occupation, but also something we desperately need, so we appreciate that. Open house on Saturday. We had a community open house to highlight some of the construction completion we've done at the high school. So I want to thank Ms. McCarthy and the high school staff, as well as our students who came out on Saturday to help bring some of our community members around to the various locations. So, we had about a dozen or more students from I Care and a couple other clubs who came out to support us, giving up their Saturday morning, so I really appreciate those students and thank them for volunteering. Two things to be aware of. I don't want to steal everybody's thunder, but November 3rd, Monday, 7 o'clock, is our annual faculty recital. It helps to support music scholarships in the districts. Please come out, listen to our content, music faculty and students who will also participate with that. And then Thursday, the 6th, is our Academic Hall of Fame and National Honor Society, Dr. Night, that is at 6:30 also at the high school. So, two good nights. And I know there's some other things going on, concerts and stuff, so I'll leave that up to others. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, new business. Any board members would like to speak? Mr. Casey?
I have some old business, if that would fit in. I don't see an item here.
Go right ahead.
A number of weeks ago, Mr. Barret was in, talking about some literacy and math scores and things. Where are we with that, Mr. Catchdory?
Glad you asked. So math scores were up based on that data and that feedback, and we're continuing to try and push forward and make sure that we're making positive gains for our student experiences when it comes to math in that class, K through 12. More specifically, talking about literacy and what Mrs. Judge has been doing in her new role. She works with myself, Mr. Backus, and a select group of others, putting together a literacy survey to try and see where we are across the board with K-6 literacy instruction, overall ELA instruction, and just look at what we have in scope and sequence of what we're offering and what it is that we're going to be doing moving forward to try and have more continuity. So the scope and sequence itself needs to be ironed out. She's working on that. In addition to that, we're looking at new programming that we're introducing, but we want to make sure that we do the rollout properly. So Mrs. Judge had a meeting with myself and Mr. McAllister, Dr. Perry, and we looked at, you know, the best way of introducing some concepts and rolling it out so that it'd be well-received, and we also have some longitudinal kind of growth for it. And in addition, that literacy survey that we had worked on, she then introduced it yesterday to a group of people during our PD Day, Super Tennis Conference Day. And on the whole, some of the feedback that we got is going to help kind of shape where we go, what our next Super Tennis Conference Day is going to reveal for PD. And I think we're looking at some positive gains, but the biggest emphasis, if we're looking at that, is how can we improve our writing instruction in conjunction with our overall literacy results? Because that seems to be an area of concern, an area of inconsistency across.
Is there a target group that, like, 3rd grade, 2nd grade? Where are you with that?
Yeah, I mean, we want to really build sort of a 3, 4, 5 reading program, but the writing across the board, I mean, when we're talking K all the way through 8, that needs a lot of attention, and we have to look honestly at how we kind of scale back from what the region's experience is in 11th grade, and then work backward incrementally and be intelligent about how we structure that. You know, we also have our state exams that work from 8th grade on backward from there, too, but it's about incrementally, how do we know, just like with a portrait of a graduate, when a student is leaving 3rd grade, what are the attributes they should be able to have from a literacy standpoint or from a math literacy standpoint? And what should we expect when they enter into 4th grade and so on, from the beginning of 4th grade into the beginning of 5th grade? So those are the types of things that we're working out, just to make sure that there's a clarity across the district and having that consistency, and then being able to have some kind of consistent currency of how we're looking at data. And then we can start to hold one another accountable for where we want to go in the future of our student scores.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Keane?
I also got to attend the bus rodeo. I got to drive.
Oh, I know. I was a passenger.
You were? Listen. No hit cones. I made it in time, got the kids where they needed to be.
Can we see the cameras?
Oh, probably.
There was a GoPro in there, I think.
But.
Communication department.
I don't know how many have had that chance to actually sit in that seat and, you know, but that's a big vehicle. You've got all those buttons. And then I'm picturing 40 angelic kids sitting behind me. So kudos to our drivers that navigate that day in and day out. I'm going to stick to HR. I don't even think that's my retirement gig, so. But it was definitely, it was, you know, nice to have that opportunity to. It's realistic job preview. It's, you know, that opportunity to sit in someone else's shoes. And then on Friday, I got to attend the boys volleyball game. It was an opportunity for the team to honor their fallen teammate. John Verbo passed in February, and they had a ceremony between games. But I think the point that nearly brought me to a tear was both teams agreeing to set the score to 1-1, which was John's number for his school team and his travel team. And the first point, they gathered, they sat for 30, you know, they had a timeout for the 30 seconds, and they were with the team. But then the second point, it was both teams together showing their respect and love for John and his family. You know? Definitely tugs on the heart. You hate to see any family have to go through that. So I appreciate that they put that out there for the community come-out. Student section was fantastic. Most well-behaved I've seen, and, you know, maybe it's a volleyball thing. So.
Very good. Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Larrabee?
Yeah, so Dr. Perry, speaking on the open house, I was able to attend something I feel as a parent in the district that every parent should attend, the school, their open house, the parent open house for the kids. Very nice event. Nice to be able to put some of the new hires that we approve in here face to the names. And it was nice to see a former teacher that I had amazingly a couple of years ago. It was nice to see her again. And so that was a really nice event by all the teachers. I know it's a long day, and they really do a good job with that. Also, I see Mr. Duffy in attendance. Congratulations. So the soccer team had a big win last week against a state-ranked Bethlehem team. Keep it going, boys.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Visit.
Have a few things. It's gonna be a while. Our, the first Youth Advisory Board meeting was on October 9th, and that's where Colony, CPA, North Colony, all me at the public library, and we discussed some community events and volunteering opportunities. And our next meeting will be on November 6th, and Colony will be chairing the event. And then I Care has two most recent events are going to be Holiday High on October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:30. And then after that, we have Holiday Lights, which will be on December 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00, and that'll be encompassing the entire Colony campus. And then on Monday, Professional Development Day, myself and a few other students and Mrs. Measick, the Colony Career Planning Center Guidance Counselor, went to the New York State Bar Association to watch their Media Literacy Education Safeguarding Democracy in Digital World Conference. And we talked about media literacy, and that led into civics, No Child Left Behind, and Portrait of the Graduate. And we got to listen to Willinda Person, the teacher, Teachers Union President, Commissioner Rosa for the Education Department, and Senator Shelley Meyer, who championed the student board rep legislation and a bunch of other education pieces. And there are several different professional development opportunities for teachers in the future, which I can talk to anybody that's interested about, and I'll add the agenda here, if anyone would like to look at it. And then after that, today, me and Mr. Burl discuss different ways for myself to reach out to students and get, engage information for them, so I can bring it to the board. And we're going to, we're going to talk about different ideas, a mailbox, a reform, something that we can do in the future. And lastly, on a very happy note, CCHS has, Drama Club, Line &amp; Q, has decided that Mamma Mia will be their musical this year. And that's all I have.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. How are they going to get anybody flying on Mamma Mia? They'll find out. Yeah. No doubt. Thank you very much. It's great. Ms. Willinda?
I don't have any new business per se. I'm wondering, though, how the bus rodeo went, like, from a recruitment perspective? I'm just curious. I thought it was such a creative idea that.
Probably underwhelming. It's always good to get that out there from.
First time.
Perspective. We've had other learn-to-drive events, and we've usually gotten two or three, I think, maybe in that same ballpark. What we did get was good exposure, and hopefully that will outlast. I got a call from East Greenbush that they want to do something similar.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And we did, so hopefully that helps to get the word out and brings people in after that Saturday.
I did make a note here. Channel 10 had a great story. She herself drove and interviewed Dr. Perry and Mr. Sim, so hopefully that exposure is beneficial.
Yeah, 10, 13, even if somebody wasn't there or get there, they saw it on rerun, and that was nice.
Anyone else? All right, I'll just finish up, too, again, with the bus rodeo. Yeah, I was asked to drive, and I was very nervous about it, I got to tell you. It was really cool. I was up very high. You have the windows all around you. You have a million mirrors. It was probably the easiest vehicle I've ever driven because of all of that. I can drive a bus now. I will not drive it with any children on it, but if I, if a bus needs to get from point A to point B, and there's no turns or anything, and I don't need to back up or anything else.
Rail or crossings.
Rail or crossings or anything like that.
Or certified rail crossings.
I did not know we were timed, so I took my sweet time because I am, you know, methodical and careful and everything. Speedy McGrady over here, though. I don't know. You might get some people whiplash.
I want to rerun because I think I cut my time in half.
But it was, it was really great. So, you know, anybody listening, it is, it is something that, don't be afraid of it. It was really cool to try. You can do it. You can do it.
And even the instruction, he was.
He was terrific.
Because not just steer this way, pull the bottom right of the wheel to, you know, so that you knew where you're going. It was just, I don't, you know, I taught my kids to drive, but that wasn't anything that I talked about.
Yeah.
Steer that way. Steer that way.
Right. It was very specific. It was really cool. So after that, we went over to the open house at the high school. It was really neat. I did hear that Mrs. Ambrosio came over and stopped by, and she was very touched by everything that was there to honor her husband. So that was really neat. And last night, South Colony PTA District Council invited me to attend the Northeast Region PTA Officer and Administrator's Dinner at Franklin Plaza.
Terrace.
Terrace Ballroom. Yes, Terrace, last night in Troy. It was just terrific. Thank you very much. Always a meaningful evening, even though I didn't win one single basket wrap. Our South Colony people really did clean up last night with the basket wrap.
Always.
Always, always. And that is that. Thank you very much. A lot of good things coming up. Please make sure to go out and attend all these terrific things. All right. Agenda item number six, communications. Board meeting, public comments. Ms. Lanning?
Nothing's there.
All right. Nothing online. Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, Board Committee Reports. 7A is Audit Finance. Mr. Blakely, if I recall, you were not here for that, so let's turn that over to Dr. Perry.
Yes, this was our external audit report. John Cuzack, John Chris Cullen from Cuzack and Company came in and gave us a clean audit. Kudos to our business office, Ms. Martinez, and her staff, and Mr. McAllister. Do an outstanding job and continuing to keep our processes in place on a consistent basis. No findings of significant weakness were found, so we appreciate that report. Also, the internal auditor update was there. Again, clean reports from those areas. We are making a shift in the internal auditor to MM and D for this year, but overall, as good as news as you can have.
I just want to compliment again. I know it is every time we have this meeting, but Jack Lee and her staff and how good of a job they do. I don't know if people saw in the news recently, but there was a district that had like a huge cybersecurity thing with their funding and their capital project money, and, you know, I feel confident in our systems and our checks and balances in place because you have a really good team who's overseeing finances. So kudos to those guys and all the hard work they put in. They do a lot.
Yes. Thank you very much. Any questions on audit finance? All right, hearing none. 7B, policy. Mr. Larrabee?
Yeah.
Were you absent on this one?
No, I wasn't, but I was, we're not actually, I did look over the.
Okay, so you're ready to roll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go right ahead.
This is the point where the participation in government students really want to pay attention. Got a final reading and approval for four policies. Does anybody have any questions on them? 9020.1, 9101, 9141, and 9140.1-R. Who's having that? On behalf of the Policy Committee, upon the motion made by Committee Chair Member Christopher Larrabee, recommendations that the revisions made to the above stated policies be approved as presented.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you, Mr. Larrabee. Agenda item number eight, reports for information. This goes from A to, oh, just A, excuse me. Oh, this is, this is Mr. Boardman's. We're not going to rush this one. Sorry about that, Mr. Boardman, and I'm on to the next one. K through 12, ENL, Universal Pre-Kindergarten Update. Mr. Boardman, the supervisor of special programs will provide an update on the ENL UPK programs. Mr. Boardman, take it away.
Thank you, and thank you for having me back. I brought some friends, but obviously not good enough friends. They didn't want us to. But I thought it was important, you guys hear from me every year, so I thought it was important to bring some friends and more importantly, some professionals that are in the front line with us at the UPK program. So Aaron Goble, of course, is one of our veteran UPK teachers, and this year, Aaron is serving in a capacity that's very exciting, that you guys were grateful, gracious to help us out with, and that was, she's acting as, if you will, kind of a strategist for some of our different programs, to help out with some of the gaps that we have, help the teachers, you know, some of the areas that we can't quite always get to. We also have Stacy Gaberski, who is our CPSC Chair. Stacy, by trade, is a speech pathologist, so she brings that lens to the program as well. And Stacy also works with our middle school CSE as well. So, one person that I could not attend was Brianna Waltari. She's one of our ENL teachers that is going between all of our programs last year. Great success with that. So, very exciting. Saw a lot of growth in our multi-language learners, that's what they are at that point, but a lot of growth. Some of them did not even have to go through and take the NICE tells. That's how successful she was with her interventions. So, they're here. Figured, you know, you guys may want to ask some questions to some of them, or, you know, they can jump in as they see fit. So, hopefully everybody got a copy of the.
Other way.
There we go. All right. So hopefully everybody got a copy of the update last week. These are our numbers as they speak. Again, we added a five-hour program at Saddle this year, so all five buildings have a five-hour program. We also embarked on the collaboration classroom with Childtime. That came in late, if you remember, because that came after the lottery. There was some things that we needed to work through to make sure that we were okay having this collaboration. So far, so good. Dr. Perry and I were there about two weeks ago. Great classroom. They have a certified teacher in the program, which is part of the collaboration. And right now, we're about 13 out of 16 students there. Okay, so we're about three shy there, and we're about 10 right now shy in our two-and-a-half-hour programs. I'm working with Cara and Dana to get some information out there. Excuse me. I've been in a hospital for the past week with my mom, so the voice is not all there. Working with Communications to get that out. Let folks know that we do have openings. Okay? Some, if you will, the highlights from there. Pre-K on my way is, we're kind of fully ingrained in that. Last year was kind of our first adaptation of it. The teachers are using it. Many of them love it. There's a lot of great resources in the curriculum itself to plug and play. Remember, again, it wasn't to discard everything that they worked on previously to that point. That was very important to all of us. It was something to accompany what they've done, meet the standards, move forward. We added the early intervention support with Aaron, who right now is a couple weeks into it. So far, so good.
Yes, so far, so good. It's all great.
If you want to touch base on any of that area at all.
Yeah, it's been great. It's an evolving role, and as we see the different kids and different needs and different classes, it's kind of like, so there's nine, as Bill said, there's nine different sections, so I'm kind of spread between all of them. Some kids at this point, starting the year, I'm helping with the social, emotional, learning to do school and getting, working through those things. And in my experience in pre-K, the kids do seem to eventually settle in. A lot of those kids settle in, so hopefully we'll be able to do some more targeted skills in the academic area, too. So every class is different, and so my days are different. And just working with the teachers to meet the needs of the different kids in the classes. Another great part has been the parent piece. I'm able to really, because I'm there every day, I can pop out, "Hi, I'm Aaron Goble. Nice to meet you." I've been, I've met a lot of them and have quick conversations about what we're seeing and trying to work with the families that way, too. So that's been a great piece. And working with Stacy to help move along. You probably know the county process is very tedious to get services in place for kids who may or may not need them. So working together with Stacy to try to get that ball rolling quicker and try to just cut some, move it along a little bit quicker. I think that's the highlight. It's really been, it's been going really well, just figuring out each teacher, what, how I can support them best. That's what I hope from my years in pre-K, like, you could always use that extra set of hands, and there's always those things you want to get to that are on the back burner, but you have to prioritize what you're doing. So it's nice for me to have the time, even to sit and work with a small group of kids where I'm not worrying about what's happening everywhere else in the room. I can actually really, really dedicate my time and focus to you and not be like, "Hey, you sit down over here, and what are you doing? And what's happening in the bathroom?" All those little fires that you put out every day in pre-K. That, I found, has been so beneficial, too. Like, the social piece right now, role-playing, if they're playing and you want all the pieces, well, let's talk about that. What can we do? Whereas in the past, you're kind of like, you're doing it, but you have eyes in the back of your head, trying to figure out what everybody else is doing. So it's been nice to really be able to focus on that. So, I think that's the gist of it.
And I would add, just collecting data points, you know, for information for Stacy to be able to use if kiddos need to look to be evaluated and things of that nature. So, you know, so far, so good, and again, grateful for your support in regards to that. Touch base just briefly. We had an enhanced screening in June. That was fantastic. We had a whole gamut there. So as parents came in with their kiddos, we were able to screen them for, obviously, health situations with our nurses. We had Stacy there for speech and also kind of that CPSC lens. We had teachers, obviously, there to get the information that they needed. We had Brianna Waltari there for our ENL piece of that, to screen some of those kiddos. It was fantastic. Again, even through all of that, it's only a small snippet, so some of those kids will come through, they look, they look like rock stars. They get in after a couple weeks, and they kind of settle, and things start to kind of appear, and that's, that's where we're trying to make some changes and get them to support. Thank. Questions on UPK at all?
Are any of the sections integrated?
We wish.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. I can speak a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just to kind of piggyback off of our screening, that was really beneficial this year because what we were able to do was see our students who are coming into us, and we were all able to lay eyes on them. Our new instrument called the Brigance looks at all areas of development, not just academic skills. So it's really nice to see where students are, behavioral, fine motor skills, speech and language, so we're really kind of able to see where they are. And if any of the students need any extra assessments, then we can begin that process then. So my role as CPSC is to talk to parents when they have concerns about their children and get the referral process started. We have timelines and regulations that we have to follow. So just, I'm sure it's, this really isn't public knowledge, but the unfortunate part at the CPSC level is that we have to share all of the evaluating agencies with the Capital District. So all of the school districts in, or all of the schools in Albany County are using the same evaluating agencies. So even though it's early in the school year, it's only October, our evaluating agencies are hooking out until December and January. So if we have students who we don't identify very early on, which was a really positive piece of doing our screening in June, then we're really lagging with getting them the then we're really lagging with getting them the services that they need when they need them. So I think that's something that we should, you know, just continue to move forward with and still better our practice with our early screenings and see how we can, you know, help that process along as well. Currently, we have twelve students, twelve South Colony students who are four years old in an integrated program classroom, a special class integrated setting. So the ratio there would be six students, one teacher, two teacher assistants, two general students or typical students. So we really could have two integrated classrooms at the preschool level, just with the students we have for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So the need is there and as our students come in, we are seeing a lot more of social, emotional deficits that are really challenging to support if we don't have enough staff. So that's why we were so fortunate that you were able to prove Erin in this role because it really will be beneficial to all of our students.
So what you would need to have the integrated setting is just increase MTE? Is that correct?
And staffing to go with, as you can imagine, yeah. Very, I know you asked a similar question last year. And even, you know, seeing what you see with your lens and professional manner. I attended the UPK Day at State Ed last year and it was interesting to kind of hear how they're forecasting, what's, what districts, what's coming down the pipe for school districts and when you're in three-year-olds by a certain date too. It's, so anyways, yeah, and again, this was a piece that by adding this position with Erin to be able to try to at least kind of put out some of the fires while we can and give those teachers that extra support is huge.
My last question is around the lottery and have we a lottery for any particular characteristics?
We have not, yeah. And, and just on that note too, like I shared with you about the collaboration.
You can wait for economically disadvantaged.
Not, not according to OHL.
Is it different than K-12?
Yeah.
UPK is.
Yeah, it's universal, so there's not supposed to be any weighing to the system. It's one of the things that they've proposed to legislature to change. I know Gillan was recommending that and there was some legislation proposed, but currently the lottery does not allow for a weighing system for.
For UPK.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty targeted. And just on that note, like you said, the collaboration classroom that we started, that was late. So for this year, and again, I think right now, if to predict, we'd probably still maintain that collaboration as well. We would have that in the lottery, so people would know that would be an option.
Yep.
Whereas last year's lottery, it wasn't quite an option. We went back to the, we went back to the.
And that's where I want to, so the thirteen heads of Childtime?
Yeah.
Did they feed from those two and a half hour slots?
So what we had to do, because it was so late, we went through, we had, let's see, we had two hundred and close to thirty applicants. So we had placement for one sixty-two, but then we're adding sixteen students onto. We had to go back through everybody that declined.
That's what I.
We had to ask, you know, multiple times and then allow them, you know, forty-eight hours to kind of respond. So that'll be a little bit fine-tuned this year. And also potentially having another collaboration classroom, we're going to take a look at that as well.
That was by.
Ideally, one on this side of the district, one on that end of the district. Got some ideas, but we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, we still have some room within the grant. UPK is not fully funded like kindergarten through twelfth grade is. So the district right now pays about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of general fund in addition to about six hundred and fifty thousand of the New York State grant that we have for universal pre-K. So we do have about nine hundred and fifty, maybe seventy thousand dollars available, but that essentially fifty-four hundred dollars per child. So when you have the collaborative efforts like Childtime, that pays for a portion of the day, the four and after-school care that they're offering is a private pay type situation. And so we look at expanding our two and a half hour days to five hours, which we've done. Some of the space concerns, which we've gotten to a point where we've maximized classroom space in our buildings, until VETER comes back onboard with a little bit more space and is rebuilt.
Right.
We're going to struggle to have empty classrooms available for expansion. But that's been really a real benefit to go into that five-hour program and something that we know there's demand for. Obviously, they fell first.
Did we see anything from the state? I know this was a talking point with Assemblyman Steck and Senator Ashby the last two years. And I remember one of them saying, oh, we should address it.
Yeah, unfortunately, the reimbursement rate of fifty-four hundred dollars is the same since the mid-nineties when we first started the program. So that's one of the challenges with the collaborative partnerships because in order for Childtime or anybody else to offer that, they have to make it, you know, affordable to hire their staff and meet our requirements. We're able to do it with our South Colony teachers here. So it's definitely been a blessing to continue to expand that program, but there's, there's room. I know what Stacy talks about, what Bill talks about, that early intervention. Three and four-year-olds are handled through the county. More and more of that is being asked upon by the school district, but that's an economic shift. The county would love us to hire the staff to do that, but we would be paying for it out of our, you know, budget here, which has a rebound effect for the rest of the program's K-12. So it's always an economic decision, but we've been able to expand through that partnership with state grant and obviously.
And Mike, there was this, there was another grant that we actually put all, we applied for it, but we were, we were denied. So which would have given us more money for students to be able to.
Yeah, that financial piece is just, you know, it's going to be a bigger struggle as we move forward.
Yeah. Other questions on UPK? Yeah, just jumping to ENL. That actually, that picture was part of a pretty cool event we did. We did a collaboration with athletics and the soccer team. So Vanessa Moriello and her cousin Tony Green, who's the soccer coach, Vanessa's one of our teachers over at VETER. We were able to kind of do a World Cup night, one of the soccer games. It was, it was fantastic. You know, we started small, we got a good number of families out and they were very appreciative. Again, it's the world sport. We got a pretty good stadium there that we want to expose kids to earlier and better. It was fantastic, so. Just jumping ahead in regards to just updates. So we literally just did trainings yesterday at the K-8 level for Lexi English. Lexi English is going to be a, hopefully a kind of a game changer for our students to be able to literally practice their language proficiency. It's a computer-based program, but not only is it geared towards their language acquisition, there's a lot of academic language for some of the core subjects that they'll be able to also hone in on. We're starting small, we're using it really just for that language acquisition with the idea that we'll eventually turn key that into using it with all of the classroom teachers as well to be able to practice that academic language too. Edmentum, you've heard of. It's a longstanding program here at the high school, so this was what we looked at for our high school students. Edmentum is now, again, Edmentum is a credit recovery program that the district's been using for quite some time. Through a lot of conversation, you know, at the high school level, especially with our ELA teachers and our co-teach, our ENL co-teach, we're trying to come up with ways of what can we do to kind of help boost some of that, that progress that students should be making. So what we're looking to do with the Edmentum at the high school for right now is just use it as a support. So it's, I think it's going to be a huge asset for our ELA teachers to be able to kind of help fine-tune some things that that's really what those entering and emerging kiddos should probably focus on. Eventually, it certainly can go into the other core area subjects, but we're going to focus on ELA for right now. It's just to kind of kickstart it. It could potentially be that credit recovery in the summertime for any of our ENL students that are successful coming through that course of the year. And then we would look to fine-tune it, moving, moving that forward. So very exciting, it just went to a translatable version this summer. And again, it's, it's a known product that the district's been using, so that's the reason why we, we are adopting it. I talked previously about the language proficiency team. Language proficiency team district-wide is really just, if you think of it, it's a consulting group of many stakeholders trying to help the buildings at the MTSS model, RTI plans, whatever the case may be. We try to help those buildings and those teachers out and trying to kind of work through some of the nuances because again, the language deficiency certainly can kind of hinder any progress. So we got to be very cautious in trying to, you know, label and give kids IEPs if it's really not that. So it's, it's kind of a fine-tune type of a, of a process, so. Who else? Cece Chung, Cece Chung, if you have not met Cece, she's wonderful. She is one of our psychologists. She is over at Leishakil. She is also part-time with us with ENL. Oftentimes, it's not enough time for us with ENL. This year, we're trying to get her into as many buildings as possible. The goal, basically, to work with our building psychologists, work with our teachers, and more importantly, work with our students and families. There's a lot of needs that, that, that population has. And Cece herself, a former English language learner, has a passion behind it. And I think we're going to be in good shape having Cece on our team. She was instrumental with our language proficiency team as well. Touch base, just a couple, again, opportunities that we do throughout the course of the year. I actually just attended last week with our Stacy Swanson, our ENL teacher at the high school, Kristin Measick at the Career Planning Center. They took a tour of Hudson Valley. I was able to kind of piggyback, jump over there. Great turnout. We had probably had a good twenty-five, thirty students. A lot of great questions that they were asking, you know, the counselors and the support at Hudson Valley. So that was wonderful to be part of. Of course, we know our multi-annual, multicultural festival that will occur next year. This Friday, there's going to be Hispanic Night at Sand Creek, really kind of all of our middle schools combined. So that's a first, should be fun. A lot of good music and a lot of good food there. Touch on that. This is just a snapshot of what our top five home languages are. Again, Spanish, Pashto, Chinese, Arabic, Urdu. And then these were our nicest slat results. They were awesome. We had a lot of folks command out. We probably had almost, I think we had eighteen percent of our students command out, which is a level five. That means that, you know, if you will, they are, they're comfortable enough and they pass everything that says that they should be good to go and be able to kind of fly on their own. We monitor them, we still continue to offer them any kind of accommodations that they may need. But by that point, we've had great success that once they command out, they've done a great job as, as kind of just, you know, merging into all the classes. You're level four and you're level three. I always say you're, you want to look at like a Pac-Man, so the smaller the mouth, which is level one and level two, the better. So we're doing a pretty good job and you can see what those, what those percentages are across the board. And again, just a reminder, that is that end of the year state assessment that determines their language proficiency. And I'm going to say, I think all but one student made a jump of at least one language proficiency level, if not multiple. So our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. I also have to say, so are our classroom teachers, so is the district as a whole because of what we've done over the course of the years of just welcoming them, they're providing a welcoming environment, so.
Hey Bill, is there a specific age that it might be the quickest to?
The earlier. Yeah, so that's that whole early intervention.
Yeah.
So thus the reason why we were able to plug in Brianna Gualtari at UPK. We saw kids, we, we kind of took a gauge of where they were. And that's only one day a week she was jumping in with them to work with them. So the earlier the better. And if you think of the models that other parts of the world use when they teach students language, it's earlier, not later. So our high school students, as they're entering into our country for the first time, you know, they're, they're moving towards that. That's a harder way to kind of adopt the language, takes a little bit longer. Any other questions?
Two questions. First, your, your first slide talked about, or showed the, the students that are in ENL.
Yeah.
How many new people?
Oh, good question. So I'm going to back up. Last year, we finished, I think it was, we had three hundred and sixty take the nicest slats. So to start the year, as we were kicking off in September, I think we were about two, we were around two, high two-eighties. And then through, you know, we call it the summer rush, which is that registration of, of ENL students coming in. And so right now, we're up to three thirty-two. And that, that's probably changed since, you know, two days ago when I put that together. That just kind of gives you a gauge of, of the, of the numbers in what we're.
Grows every year.
Yeah, so to answer your question, my anticipation is I would say by the time we get to the nicest slats, which is in the spring, we'll probably be up to that three sixty number, if not further. That has been our trend over the past years that I've been part of the program.
Okay, Mike, my second question is about the UPK multilingual learners. Do the teachers have ENL support?
So this was our first year that you guys granted us the opportunity to have an ENL teacher who rotated through all of the buildings and I, Erin was in the classroom and I, I don't want to speak for her, but I think it was an asset.
Oh, having Brianna there last year? Yes, it's always very good to have extra hands. And I think the kids, pre-K is such a great level too because the kids are, the immersion is there and they're talking about all these things. So the natural way for them to learn. But Brianna was a great addition to the program, yeah.
So probably of those forty-four, how many are non-English speakers at all?
Well, to be fair, of the forty-four, I, I would probably guess to venture about a quarter of them. Got to the point where we knew we didn't have to provide them with a nicetel, which is an official, you know, you go through a screening. So the teachers will go through and they'll screen and they'll ask a lot of questions, not only with them, but also with their, their parents as well. And just through that determination, working with the UPK teachers on feedback of how they were doing in the classroom, we were able to kind of determine that they didn't even need to take the nicetel. She had kind of, if you will, an approximate level of where they were. There's not an official test at the UPK level because they're not officially ENL until I heard. But she was able to kind of gauge an approximate level. And again, that level, I'm going to say, three-quarters of them probably jumped to, I'm going to say, two language levels.
Very good, thank you.
One of the challenges that Bill's continued to advocate for is that we get those UPK students there, you know, in the county services for three and four-year-olds, but they still come with additional support. Sometimes you call them twice exceptional with students who may have IEP needs and also have the language needs. You know, the funding source doesn't equate to that. That dollar amount that I mentioned per child doesn't equate to these extra services, but it pays off in the long run. So the community and the board has been instrumental in putting those resources in play and I got to give Bill credit. He's constantly, you know, banging the drum to say, we need this, we need this, because he's, he's seen good results as a result. I know when he asks for things, budget, well, budget time, it's not because it's an extra, it's a need, so.
Thank you.
How much, how many of the students are, or percentage are long-term Ls, like past the threshold of how we would expect them to naturally progress through the nicetel or nicest slat levels?
You're going ENL? Sorry, how many would be?
Like long-term Ls that have, you know, just not tested out of nicest slat?
I would say probably ballpark, a quarter. I think that's a fair number to kind of, to say. You know, the test isn't, you know, test takers in general and you get to things of that nature and how difficult it is. That's probably a fair number.
What kind of different interventions do those students get who are? Like I'm thinking specifically about students who, because it pod ties their schedule in such a manner that then they can't access, you know, our upper level, you know, our electives and the things that are going to give them career pathways as much if they have to take, you know, all of their one fifty-four minutes.
So those, you're tinkering with that kind of twice exceptional kiddo, right? Like that's, that's kind of what you're talking about there?
I'm talking about students who are, you know, past the sort of, you know, two to three-year threshold of, you know, they're, they're stuck at transitioning, they're stuck at expanding and therefore we still have to give them their minutes, which means they're not able to access elective coursework and other coursework of interest that, you know, helps them sort of steer into their post-secondary.
So actually, Cece, this year, we just adopted a new tool, like it's an evaluation tool, a little bit more fine-tuned to the ENL student that we're kind of excited about to see how that works for us. I, you know, I think in general, teachers, you know, they are always going above and beyond in regards to what they can provide them and different opportunities. You know, we have after-school programs and a lot of times we look at those kiddos and try to make sure that they're in our ENL clubs. We try to make sure that they're coming during the summertime. You know, it's frustrating, you know, I think anybody that is in the field knows that. You, you see it yourself in your district too. Yeah, but at the high school level, on that note too, I think that's something that we're looking at. You know, we're getting sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old entering student. And to be able to try to get them across the finish line with all of the requirements from New York State is not the easiest. And so that's, thus the reason why we're looking at Edmentum as well, to kind of bring that in. They can now kind of use that at home to try to help kind of self, self-pace with their, their home language. And then the other piece of that too is we're looking at, is there something that we could do with them on a work-based learning opportunity to try to get them ready for their careers as well? In fact, I've, I've been in contact with somebody from Albany and they were interested in what we were doing at the Colony Community Connection Program. So we've been kind of creating some different ideas back and forth.
I don't see Edmentum as like, because the, you know, from an output standpoint, right? Like speaking, writing, Edmentum doesn't like support, right? Like it's, it's the inputs.
It is. It is, yeah.
And so I don't see that as something that would be accelerating. But like the work-based learning stuff, like that's the output, right? Like that's the speaking and the.
Like, I think that's definitely something that I have been interested in. And, you know, just the experience of the, the CCC program. Like, I kind of have an idea of how that works, but I, I think it's, you know, more investigation and more time and so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Stacy, Erin, thank you.
Bill, you have a long beach you want to get going.
Oh, I'm good.
All right, agenda item number nine, reports and recommendations for action. This goes from letter A to letter G. Any comments, questions? Particular note, the donations, twenty-one hundred dollars from the Football Booster Club. The donation of school supplies from VFW Post eight-six-nine-two Colony. And the donation of backpacks and lunch bags from Susan from Brighton. Thank you very much. Anything else? Hearing none, I will take a motion. Ms. Gigliello, second, Mr. Larrabee. On the motion made by Ms. Gigliello, seconded by Mr. Larrabee, that the above stated reports and recommendations be approved, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. Agenda item number ten, personnel instructions, Mr. Ravalati, pages eight through ten.
Yeah, nothing crazy that jumps out. I think when we get back on the two-week cycle, if things start to settle a little bit, there's a lot of extrapricular things that we've started to see some interconnection change out there too. So just um moving things forward.
Right. Any questions on number ten? Hearing none, I will take a motion. Mr. Casey, second. Mr. Likely on the motion made by Mr. Casey, seconded by Mr. Likely, that the instruction personnel changes listed on the attached sheets dated October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five be approved, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. Agenda item number eleven, personnel support, pages twelve through thirteen. Again, Mr. Ravalati.
Yeah, I'm looking at, mine's just one page. I wanted to check on Karen, so we added anything, but I don't know if you'll ever see supportive fish word. No values on there, so that's a, it's a positive. Just some appointments and obviously we appreciate a substitute nurse, fantastic. And Michelle Paulson also, um, who is entering retirement at the end of December, looking to continue to help us with this. Appreciate all of those, but sure, generous.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Keen, second, Ms. Gigliello. On the motion made by Mr. Keen, seconded by Ms. Gigliello, that the support personnel changes listed on the attached sheets dated October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five be approved, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. Agenda item number twelve, resolution, capital area health insurance consortium trust agreements.
That's a mouthful.
It is.
Cashic.
Cashic.
Then, then you look at all the schools involved and that's like seven.
Wow. This is the news our agreement every five years.
The, so I'm curious as far as, does, what does Cashic do for strategy at this point with healthcare costs skyrocketing, evolving?
Um, we, we meet almost monthly, maybe bi-monthly um to review trends. We meet with um both insurance carriers very frequently, like we meet with the Vice President of Highmark, you know, the President of CDHP. We are one of their, both of their larger, largest customers um in New York State. So um, the school, Cashic is one of the largest districts, their largest customer bases for uh both CDHP and Highmark. So we are working with both companies actively, continually to work on cost mitigation strategies, or, or cost avoidance strategies. So um, as premiums increase, we're working with them to figure out how we can um go through, like, um, Highmark is implementing some things that'll give us some cost avoidance strategies which will reduce the increase of premiums. So it's not really a savings, but it's a savings cost avoidance. So we just got a list, long list from the summer. Um, there's a retreat where we invited Highmark. Highmark came and attended. I'm on the executive committee, so I'm at more meetings than the average school district member. So um, I'm heavily into this and it's my most depressing meeting. So.
We, we can commiserate. I'm going through it now.
I think it's a, it's a broken system. So we're trying to work within a system that's of healthcare and.
And it's PPO?
We have um PPO, yes, uh, for both CDHP and Highmark. Um, we are on Cashic's model plans, so it gives us the, the buying power within CDHP and Highmark. And that also gives the option between, you know, going between the two companies. So um, we, we work with, we have the, with the buying power that we have. We have the ability to negotiate rates. Um, Highmark, we have a retrospective plan, so if our premiums are higher or we, the buyout is, or the payout is higher, we would have a call. If we're lower, we would get a refund. Um, our CDHP plans are prospective, so they're not retrospective. So um, they set the rates and if they lose, then they lose, but they will increase the rate higher, which is why CDHP has been hiring. I could go on and on about this. We don't want to. Um, we are doing as much as we can and we meet with regularly.
You know, and I just look at it from the strategy standpoint, knowing, you know, each year, you know, it, it's hard to sustain. We already pour so much into salary and benefits that, you know, that's going to become a burden.
It's one of the um highest thing we all, as, as we meet as school districts together. Um, we all talk about, you know, um, what are strategies within these part-owned marketing groups?
One of the things was the GLP-one strategy. So they still offer those drugs, but you have to go through a tier approach.
Yep.
Try the things with your medical providers before going on to.
IO similars, um, we're, we've, we've gone through all of these things.
Well, CDHP is pulling that as of Jan. one. I, I don't know if it's, I think just.
We have a set of prescription plans, so it's.
Comorbidities being the focus rather than doing the same, so.
Yes, um, we've had a lot of restrictions in place with keeping within our contractual obligations. So we, we look heavily at um what we can do within our collective bargaining agreements and making sure that we're providing a good product to our members. So that, that's really the, we, we offer really good health insurance and that's a great recruiting pool. So um, being able to offer that is, is great. So I think that's balancing those things and the premiums and the percent that we have in place pay is important too.
Does, does the consortium try to recruit other districts?
Uh, yes, we, so we actually, people come to us and.
I would think that anybody would, why not?
Most of the districts in the area are part of, um, actually, most of the capital region is part of Cashic.
Okay.
Um, we also are getting people that are outside of our region looking to join. And this agreement allows us to add small districts. So there's a, there's, uh, districts under one hundred, say Manans. Um, the hose was, was grand, uh, Green Island was grandfathered in. So they're a member, but Manans, if they wanted to join, they couldn't join based on um our, our old, our old um agreement. So this agreement allows us to allow small districts in, if they would like to, small employers and part of our consortium, we're able to do that because we have it in every district already. Um, it, it limits their voting power to one for five districts to have um voting power in the, in the consortium to keep the, the balance of the needs of larger districts versus smaller districts. So that's the one change in this agreement. But we just have to renew it every year, make sure that I can still go and make our, make our case and push, push forward on the health insurance. We're doing our, I, we do have a lot to report on. We can do a, a report based on um Cashic, after Cashic's next meeting on what um strategies Highmark is looking to implement and then looking to CDHP to do as well. And Highmark is our prescription drug plan um provider, so that's one of our largest cost drivers of the increases that we're seeing. So we are self-insured on that aspect, so we want to make sure that we're um cost mitigating that as much as possible. So the Highmark, Highmark's doing a lot of, a lot for us. Um, and they're pushing a lot out to, to help.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you very much. May I ever hear a motion, please? Ms. Houlihan, second, Mr. Keen. On the motion made by Ms. Houlihan, seconded by Mr. Keen, that the above stated resolution be approved, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero. Agenda item number thirteen, future meetings. Any questions? Ms. Houlihan.
I just want to let you know I'm not going to be able to attend on November twelfth.
November twelfth. So noted.
I will actually be out of town on the twelfth, but I will be returning for the twenty-fourth policy committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larrabee. Are there any items for executive session? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Mr. Keen, seconded, Mr. Casey. On the motion made by Mr. Keen, seconded by Mr. Casey, that the regular meeting be adjourned, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries nine to zero, time seven thirty-two. Thank you all so very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Government students, come on down.
Which one?